You can also give gift cards to be used by survivors to purchase their own toiletries. All items and gift cards will be donated to CAST, Saving Innocents, and Journey Out, three L.A.-based organizations that provide wraparound services and compassionate care to survivors of human trafficking. Drop-off locations include L.A. City Hall, L.A. City Hall Room 470, Sun Valley District Office, and Van Nuys City Hall Office. For information, you can also call Patricia Chavez at (213) 473-7006.
Today, we have a senior snowball in which we welcome seniors who are in our Wreckin' Parks facilities through our Department of Aging. Come and celebrate the holiday season.
I love to see how the Getty House opens its doors to all residents. It's the people's house.
I feel very good. I'm 102 years young, and just to get out of the house and see the sunshine.
It's probably my very favorite event of the year. I love this event because there's more wisdom, more experience, more stories, more of Los Angeles's richness here in this event than any other event I go to each year.
So many times, we seem to be forgotten, and this is what makes me feel good.
I like the beat, but I can't move my feet.
You dance harder than the young people when they come here. You know that these are the days to savor, to give back. It's also a chance, not just for folks to see Getty House and to find each other, but to learn critical information. So today, they're learning about the census and how we can make sure that all seniors are counted. Fill out the census this year, 2020. Go to census.gov or show up at a local library and we'll help you out.
For many kids of immigrant parents, staying connected to their cultural roots can be tough. But there's one city library program that's using art to plant a seed for future generations.
We are at Chinatown Branch Library. Today, we're having our Chinese New Year, Chinese Lanterns, Arts and Craft. We are celebrating Year of the Rat. It's very important for kids to be here today because this program is more than about celebrating Chinese New Year. It's about bringing awareness to the culture, to Chinese arts and craft, and it's about celebrating the Chinese traditions. We want, you know, children to understand where they're coming from, you know, where their families are from, you know, where they grew up, and, you know, things that they may not learn here so much, like in school, they could learn here at the library. Chinese New Year is going to be held on January 25th, 2020, and we are having our Chinatown Golden Dragon Parade here on February 1st. So we just want to kind of build in all these cool activities.
Chinese New Year was started about 3,500 to 3,800 years ago. So the legend was that in this village in China, there was a monster.
As a Chinese, I always think that it's important to share my culture and heritage with other people, so that other people can also learn from our culture and heritage. And at the same time, I love to learn, you know, from other people as well. Well, I hope that, you know, everybody will come out to celebrate Chinese New Year with us. It's a fun festival. We have the parade. You know, we have different dancing and different food, especially a lot of candies, and share our culture and celebrate with us and have wonderful blessings for the whole year.
But wait, there's more. If you want to sharpen your street art skills, the library offers that, too. Artist and East L.A. native Gajin Fujita recently held a hands-on workshop exploring techniques of spray painting, stenciling, and lettering.
It's very important for me personally because I was born and raised in the city of L.A. And the public library that I frequented in my neighborhood served as like a sanctuary for me when I was a kid. And so I think it's really important that kids in the city get a taste of what art thinking could be like.
He's showing the participants, who are all teens, about doing his kind of art, you know, doing street art, which is where he got started, sort of the ideas at the library. He uses very bold colors, and he tells us that he got those bold colors from looking at tropical fish books at the library.
For me, it's about trying to empower the youth of our city and trap them with, you know, knowledge of art.
We're more than just books and magazines and videos and DVDs. We're a cultural center. And so, you know, that's what first drew Gajin to the library, is he needed a place that was cooler, but he also thought of it as a community center. Maybe 10 or 15 years, we'll have an art card from one of these students. That would be nice.
The library has lots of other great programs. To learn more, visit lapl.org/events. From traditional cultural performances, food tastings, and family activities, the Ashagatsu Family Festival highlighted Japanese tradition and brought the community together.
It's an opportunity for us to celebrate the New Year, to ring in the New Year, but also to give back to our community, our local community, as well as to our members with an extraordinary day of high-energy, cultural celebration, entertainment.
We're so grateful that we have the opportunity to get a taste of the Japanese culture.
Things about each culture that are really important and that make every person an individual, but also brings people together.
How fun was that? Well, for more events at the Japanese American National Museum, visit j a n m dot org. Well, if you ask me what a fun night looks like, I'd say good food, good wine, and good friends. What could be better than that? Well, Union Station was the place to be for all those things.
2020 Unquart Wine Festival, woo-woo! Oh, to drink all the wine. There's 150 different vendors, so we will for sure be hitting each one of those up.
We have about 60 wineries from across the globe, gourmet food trucks, photo booth, live band, DJ, lots of fun stuff for people to come and enjoy with their friends.
Everybody's got a taste, but events like this bring so many different people into Really good wine, good friends, hopefully a little bit of trouble, just a little bit.
As you notice, like, there's a lot of great, like, vibe around here. The energy's so high, everybody's so happy.
The community is gonna be up and popping when you come to events like this because it's free pouring, lots of vino, lots of sparkly bubbly. But it actually shows that, you know, L.A. still has that love, that energy for the community.
We will be back again in June to do a summer version this year.
A Happy New Year to everybody, and may this 2020 be spectacular.
How do you get your voice heard when it comes to community issues? Well, there's a city department called Empower L.A. that encourages you to play a bigger role in your local government. Saeda Pagan sat down with the new head of the department. Saeda.
Thanks, Yana. Today, we are in conversation with Raquel Beltran, the new general manager of the Los Angeles Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. She spoke to me about her vision for Empower L.A. You were appointed a few months ago, so tell us what you've been doing in that time. I know you've been hard at work meeting with some of these councils.
Well, I initiated a listening tour with the neighborhood councils, and I averaged six neighborhood councils a week. I've been able to visit about 59 neighborhood councils, and it has been a wonderful experience, talking and listening with the elected leadership from the communities all over Los Angeles.
A lot of public officials have gotten their start with the neighborhood councils. Tell us how that's possible.
It's my favorite part of this system. Whenever anybody decides that they're going to start interfacing with government, start attending government meetings, start figuring out what avenues exist in order for you to be able to express yourself, your thoughts, and to serve your community, you've already taken a step forward in learning how to govern, how to become an elected official.
My name is Lily Larson. I'm 17, and I've been an activist since I was five. There is no age too young to get involved in your community. Let's come together and make change for the highest good, for our neighborhoods, for our city, our state, our country, and our planet.
What I see happening rapidly is an increase in the number and the experience that young people are developing by being elected and appointed to serve on these neighborhood councils. The numbers are increasing all over the city.
We're both running for positions in the city of Van Nuys, and we just want to get more information on how to start building our campaign, and also getting information on how we can make our city better and what are specific roles that we can use to make our community a lot better.
They are energetic. They're inspired by other young people around the world who are getting engaged for a variety of reasons in their communities and in global issues, and the neighborhood council system provides people that opportunity.
Now, I'm sure there are people who are watching, who would like to get involved, so give us some first steps.
So I encourage people to start by just going to our website, empowerla.org. Research which neighborhood council is near your home. Attend those meetings. I always tell people, just go check it out, see what's happening, get on the list so that you can start receiving the agenda, so that you can become familiar with what they're discussing. Start attending the meetings, and then when you feel comfortable, throw your hat in the ring, become a candidate. Ask the Neighborhood Empowerment Advocate to help you in that process, to help you learn more about it. They're available to give you that kind of support.
Well, thank you so much for empowering us by giving us this great information.
It's my pleasure.
Empower L.A.
Do your part to help beautify a local elementary, enjoy an evening benefiting Friends of the L.A. River, and take in a live outdoor music show. All this and things to do. Join Human Rights Campaign L.A. for their annual Day of Service. Volunteers are encouraged to spend a day being of service to Wal Grove Elementary School, doing campus beautification activities in honor of the service, work, and life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The HCR MLK Day of Service happens Monday, January 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more info, look for their event on signup.com. Join the good folks at Mohawk Bend for River Fest 2019, a very special event benefiting the Friends of the Los Angeles River. Sip on local brews while you chat with fellow Angelinos who are working towards urban river revitalization. Enjoy a river-themed playlist, raffle prizes, and more. The third annual River Fest happens Saturday, January 18th, beginning at 12 noon. For more info, visit folar.org. Ease into your new year with an afternoon of outdoor music brought to you by So Far Los Angeles. This music collective puts together live, open-air shows featuring three different acts curated to give audiences a diverse musical experience. Saturday, January 18th, we'll see the group Soul Flow take center stage at a secret location. Soul Flow at So Far Sounds begins at 3:00 p.m. For ticket information, visit sofar sounds dot com. Would you like to learn how to master wig making in one day, even if you've never used a sewing machine? Well, Fingas Beauty Academy is going to unveil all the secrets to lace front and lace closure wig making in a hands-on, eight-hour wig-making class. If you're ready to take your skills to the next level, or just try something new for 2020, reserve your spot today. The Fingas Beauty Academy Hands-On Wig-Making Class happens Sunday, January 19th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. For more, visit lacelock.net. For the fourth year, Lee's Market and the Brothers of Iota Zeta Lambda are pulling out all the stops for the MLK Day of Service. This local fraternity chapter will once again be passing out toys and providing meals in honor of Dr. King's birthday. Join the festivities Sunday, January 19th, beginning at 12 noon at Lee's Market Takeout. If you need more info, send an email to leesmarketcatering@sbccglobal.net. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kaye. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, members. We're about to begin our meeting. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, January 15th, and this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Let's run through the agenda.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Biscayino, Sadio, Herrstasen, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. O'Farrell moves, and Mr. Corretts seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. Sadio seconds. Members, let's go ahead, and I'm gonna ask you to direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through that.
Madam President, there is a request to continue items 33A, C, and D, and items 35, 36, and 37 to February 18th.
Without objection, that will be the order next.
Items 1 through 11 are items for which public hearings have been held. A corrected Budget and Finance Committee report has been posted and circulated for item 6C.
Members, are there any specials on any of these items? Seeing none, let's go ahead. Is there a special, Mr. Blumenfeld? 6C?
6C as in cat.
We'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, what's next?
And then, Madam President, we could vote on item 6C at this point.
Yeah, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that item is approved. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Items 12 through 32 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Please note that item 24 should be identified as an item in CD 9. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Are there any cards on any of these items?
Yes, Madam President, there are cards on all items.
Okay, let's go ahead and hold those. What's next?
On the continuation agenda, items 33 through 38 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards on any of these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, let's go ahead and hold those.
And Madam President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Okay, let's move on to multiple speaker cards. Sean Murphy, are you here? Come on up. Okay, Sean, hold on for just a second.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning, Sean. Give me just a second. You look like you filled out a cards for a lot of these items. 12, 13, 14, and 15 to 17, and 25 through 38. And your general public comment?
Yes, Madam President. Item 25, I'm supporting. Item 20, I am supporting. And all the other items, I'm supporting. General public comment?
Just give them his one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I hope you like to... I've been praying for you that you get this far. Just one thing you need is, I have a suggestion. When Mr. Herman yells at the microphone like he did yesterday, you should throw him out. I'm almost 56 years old, and I'm too old to be putting up with this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, Mr. Previn. Eric Previn, are you here? Mr. Previn, it looks like you filled out cards for items 13 through 38, and your general public comment?
Thank you. I'd like to welcome this very exciting crowd that's come down to walk right in front of me. This is great. This is fantastic.
Hold this time for just a second, till our guests are seated. Sorry about that, Mr. Previn. Go ahead.
No, no, no. Welcome to City Hall, and it's Eric Previn where, you know, the people are respected the same as everybody. I just want to announce that the Cannabis Commission is supposed to be meeting tomorrow, canceled, obviously because of the horrible scent emitting from that particular package that we've been struggling with, because the people in the communities are getting screwed. The people who are following the law are getting screwed, and basically, everybody's getting screwed. Now Herb Wesson's running for supervisor, so he could take care of the rest of that. Now, in terms of the 710 and the... There's no tunnel coming, there's no highway coming, but there's leftover money, about 700 million. Now Eagle Rock, thanks to Weezer, who's not around, is gonna be benefiting liberally over there. Some of the other places, like Cal State LA, where they have a very big need for ramps to get on and off, are gonna get, you know, they missed the deadline evidently. So I don't understand how this is being fair at all, and it's with MTA. So whenever we hear about MTA, obviously, we glance towards Krikorian and Bonin, and we then look down in shame because of the unbelievable failure, even in Studio City CD 2, where we have voted as a group as a neighborhood council to get a mobile pit stop. It's just a bathroom, just a little bit of decency. And we got a new plan, Councilmember Martinez, which is to take down the cage that they have, that's there for employees, that are only employees. So regular folks from the public who are coming and going, tourists. This is the greatest city in America, and yet, nothing. So we're gonna look forward to that being taken down and set up properly, so that it's reasonable. Congratulations to Frontier Holdings East LLC. I mean, to put $250,000 in the hands of Weezer, just as we leave, for the public's benefit, as he leaves, it's very sweet, and we look forward to that. Now, why all the retro illumination? I saw that Wesson wisely lit up the obelisk for the holidays, but why retroactively pay? And why only $120 when we charge so much more against it for, like, for example, when Krikorian lit it up for the Armenians? I don't mind lighting things up, but who's paying, and why is it like that? Now, today, O'Farrell has listed approximately 12 great Americans, five of which are colleagues of Mr. Wesson's and friends, who are going to be essentially be honored with the Walk of Fame. Great work. I mean, this is what we want on our agenda, because then people can come down and say, "Congratulations to Guillermo del Toro," and "Congratulations to Judith Light, who was in Transparent." Great show. You know, what can I tell you? Are we getting to the general public comment? Because if you're trying to fake me out by bunching all the time, that's not gonna work. All right, we'll go on to item 38. 38 is your... It was a municipal supplemental item. And I gotta tell you, it's not in your agenda, so that was the real problem. You added a little agenda, which I don't even have in front of me. But item 38 was, which one? Can you identify 38 for us? It was a public hearing. Do you want to tell us what it was about? It was about flexible pricing.
Mr. Previn, you have your one minute of general public comment?
It was about flexible pricing for the LA Convention Center. And so yet another opportunity to favor hotels and groups who don't live here, who come here, spend $400. We do appreciate that. But that doesn't help the folks in the trenches, the folks who are trying to get by on these impossible levels of inequality in our community. So, you know, with that, I would just say, no thanks to the 18, or 17 million out the door to AECOM, and no thanks to all of the AEG. And Englander, I mean, he came through this hallowed hall, wired up all these terrible deals for the people, and then just left. And now apparently, he lives in Santa Monica. He's given up on the valley. John Lee's pretending he cares now. It's all just... Is he gonna leave too? I just find the whole thing horrible. And I just want to say, on behalf of the public, we do need to rebut, once again, the presumption of regularity of the city clerk. Here's a group that even today is correcting their own agenda. I don't understand why. I went on to look at item 38, and the kiosk does not even say what it's about. Now, that's embarrassing for Curran Price, who's just trying to get favorable pricing.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Members, let's go ahead and vote on items 12 through 30. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's go ahead and vote on item 32. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that item passes. Mr. Wesson, are you ready for your presentation? Mr. Price?
Madam President, I'd like to move 24 forthwith, please.
Forthwith for Mr. Price, item 25.
24.
24, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wesson? Yeah, we're gonna reconsider item 28, Ms. McAllister. There's something wrong with the keypad, but we'll have you speak on that item. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Wesson.
Well, let me wait a moment, and I've got some great people that are gonna stand with me today. And I want to thank you, Madam President, and members, and say to you that today is 1500 or Nothing Day. And the marathon continues. Now, members, I know that many of you are sitting there saying, "What the heck is he talking about? 1500 or Nothing Day?" Well, if you grant me a moment, I'll set this up for you. Today, I'm gonna recognize some very important young entrepreneurs that live in our region. But it started out primarily with two young boys that were members of a church band at First AME. Now, all of us know and have heard about First AME, Fame Church. Little did these two little boys know that one day Fame would find them. So they played in the band at Fame and at other churches, and they met a guy by the name of Bobby Valentino. And they did work with Brother Valentino, and they did it for free. And so then he gets signed by Def Jam, and he then wants them to work with him again. And they said, "Well, this time, it's gonna cost you $1,500 or nothing." And he said, "Well, what's the name of your group? 1500 or Nothing." So today is 1500 or Nothing Day in the city of LA. Honoring Lawrence Dobson and a guy with my favorite name, James Fontleroy. These two guys, from our streets, from our town, from our backyard, are multi-platinum producers, and together have won over four Grammys. They have produced music for Rihanna, Chris Brown, Beyonce, my man Bruno Mars. The line "Inglewood's finest shoes," they stuck into that song. These are young men who grew up on a tough part of town, but decided to do everything that they could to become successful, and they have, and we should be very proud of them. They have worked again with some of the greatest artists, Diddy, Justin Timberlake. But it's more than just that. They decided that they want to give back, so they started the 1500 Academy, which is an all-in-one, multipurpose facility that can do it all, so that the great talent that we have in our community, that their music can be made and produced in our community, and the money can stay in our community. And for them, it's not just about money and being successful. It's about teaching young people how to do this the right way. Not only do they give them the skills and the equipment that they need to be successful, they teach them how to stay in line, they teach them life skills, and they teach them the value of being positive and helping others. So again, I want to highlight... Where's Sharice? Sharice, come over here for a second. This is Sharice Rhodes, a young leader in our community, that helped me put all of this together. The most precious resource that we have as a country are our young people. And we have a responsibility to nurture them, help them grow, and put them on the path of success, and then they will lead the way. So ladies and gentlemen, what I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna have Lawrence, Lawrence and James say a few words. So just do me one final favor, and let us give them one more round of applause. It is 1500 or Nothing Day. So who do we want to have come up? In fact, I guess I should get the CEO to come up first, and then I will get the president to come up. So let's give it up for Lawrence Dobson.
It's our day, everybody. How y'all feel? First of all, I just want to thank God, my family, all of our family here. Everybody that y'all looking to have something to do with our growth at 1500. We've been taking the stairs of life, you know, this whole time. And it just represents... 1500 to me represents standing for something, community. And, you know, every time we succeed in something, we're about giving back. So we just appreciate the city, Herb, Sharice, just for the support. And we will not let y'all down. We're gonna do everything we can to build our community up, to, you know, enlighten our culture, and make history.
Okay, let's have the president, Mr... No, President Fontleroy.
There you go, there you go. Thank you, thank you. All right, first, give an honor to God and the pastor of the church, First Lady of the council. I wanted to thank God. I wrote it down, so I got five sentences. I'm not gonna take forever, I promise you. I'm gonna get y'all home. So I wanted to thank God, my mom, the city of Los Angeles, Councilman Herb Wesson, for their acknowledgement and support. Sharice Rhodes, for all the work she's done in helping us to bring all this to another level. Our 1500 Sound Academy co-founder, Twila True, Allen and the True family. Everybody that started with 1500, who is here, almost everybody that started with us, and all the new people who we have. So I just wanted to say, in a world where the bad guys always seem to win, we set out to send out a new, more honest message that the biggest rewards and fulfillment go to the people who are even just trying to be their best. So this award really represents that, and not only helps us spread our message, but motivates us to broadcast it even louder. So we really want to thank you guys for helping us and supporting us. This is a once-in-a-lifetime accolade, but achievements are not the finish line. They're the road signs letting you know you're running in the right direction. So we know our journey is just getting started. I wanted to dedicate this to Nipsey Hussle. You feel me? Put your hands together. Because not only was he our brother, but he really reinforced our belief that you can not only be more than what people tell you you are, or what you look like, but also your circumstances, and more than anyone around you can imagine. So if you learn the rules of the race and never stop running, then you can win. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, guys, very much. Happy 1500 or Nothing Day, and now we gotta get back to studio.
Mr. Wesson, I have a member on the queue.
You know what? Before you recognize a member, members, we need to hire James as a speechwriter.
I was just gonna say the same thing. Mr. Herrstasen.
You write songs, and you could definitely write speeches. Listen, I just want to rise in solidarity and in thanks to our colleague, Councilman Wesson, for creating 1500 or Nothing Day in the city of Los Angeles. This is such a big deal for us, and I want all of you, each and every one of you that were involved in this and have been involved in it, and will be involved going forward, to understand the gravity of what you have been a part of. African-American music out of Los Angeles is in a renaissance in the world. So right now, at this very moment, the number one album and the number one song on Billboard is from somebody from right here, Roddy Ricch, right? When Roddy Ricch is interviewed, and they ask him how he got his start, he was like, "Oh, yeah, well, I could go over to 1500 or Nothing." Or, "My guys in 1500 or Nothing helped me get to the place where I could put an album on the charts and a song on the charts." And so you do it one time, and then again, and then again, and then again, and we become a center. And so Los Angeles is the creative capital of the world. When people want to become creative, they come here to do it. A large reason why they do it is because you're here, and you set up shop, and you've carried out your vision. And so I applaud you, and last but not least, I cannot go stand here without thanking you all. You were the house band, but also you were the community. You were the family that put your arms around Nipsey Hussle and the Marathon Continues movement. You helped usher this city through one of the most difficult times we've seen in a generation. And so we thank you for that. We thank you for what you have done. But most importantly, we thank you for what you will do and who you'll be to our city in the future.
Back to you, Mr. Wesson.
Okay, so now, this is for you, James. Other side. My man. Anyways, give them one more round of applause. 1500 or Nothing Day in the city of LA. Everybody over here. Let's go in the back, take some more pictures. Again, thank you, Madam President and members.
Members, we have a speaker on item 28, so let's go, let's go ahead and open that item for reconsideration. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam President. Correction, item 24 is urgent forthwith, please.
Okay, urgent forthwith.
Urgent forthwith.
So we've got a vote on that. Let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Price. Patricia McAllister, you wanna come on up? I apologize, there's a glitch on our system, that's why 28 did not come up, but you now can speak on-
I just want to tell you that, don't bring that up in here, that's your condo crap, okay? We will put some lawsuits on you if you continue this.
Hold on for just a second.
My people were in the audience, and I wanted them to hear what I had to say.
Mr.-
City Attorney?
Ms. McAllister, I'm telling you, you're gonna speak on item 28 and 34 in your general public comment.
And I have, I had, uh, 34. Get it together up there now.
Thirty-three and 34. Go ahead.
Okay. Now, thirty, 28, this is important, because you're asking for unallocated money to go to the local neighborhood, and you don't say how much. You're saying you're taking it out of these different accounts, it could be five, 10 million dollars, we don't know, and that money's been stuffed in your pockets. You're supposed to let us know what you're transferring out of this account to give to Bonin and Busciano. And I want to know, and I'm gonna do a Freedom of Information request on it. Number 34, you want no more than 20 million for this school in the illegal alien neighborhood, the Buckley School located at 3900 Stansberry Avenue. There are 600, according to Los Angeles Unified School District, this is their report, there are 619,000 students in LAUSD, and 565,000 are illegal alien Hispanics, Latinos, Asians, and Filipinos. That's over 80%. Now, you want to build a school. I'm a retired teacher, and I know that these Latinos and these illegal aliens, which you are the child of an illegal alien, Noori, they cannot learn English, and they're not graduating the way they should, because they cannot understand English, and they're not good learners. Okay? They're coming out of school, they can barely read, because their parents are speaking Spanish and Asian languages and all of that at home, and they're having a hard time learning English in school. So why are we investing all of this money into rehabilitating and building, building schools for these illegal alien children? I know why, because this council, and your buddies and everybody else, you're making money off of this 20 million. Most of that money's going in some of these, your, your pockets. Okay? Those kids are not doing good in school, you have very few African-Americans in school, and I want to say to you, Noori, don't use the term black and brown. Blacks, we don't need you, okay? You're sucking up all of our resources. These schools have very few African-American brown students. Most of them, 90% of them are illegal aliens, Hispanic, Latinos, Asian, Filipino, anybody can drive by any school at three o'clock and see who's coming out. You don't see any brown, you might see two or three. You don't see whites. This is for the entire state of California, it's the same for San Francisco, it's the same throughout California. How do I know? I've done the research, I'm a researcher, I'm a computer scientist. We have been taking over this country, it's not just in California, it's New York, Illinois, New York State, all across this country. And if President Trump, he's doing a very good job, if he continues to do what he's doing, because border crossing is down, and we're getting these illegal aliens out of this country, and President Trump just won-
Could you get back more clearly on item-
-a court case where he can separate these illegal alien children-
Ms. McAllister.
-from their illegal alien parents. Now, I want to know, why are we putting 20 million into these schools? Not just school, every time I look up, every meeting just about, when I'm not here, I'm still researching what's going on in here. We're building these schools for illegal aliens. We don't have white students in there, we don't have blacks. These are all illegal alien children, and they cannot learn because their parents are illegal aliens speaking other languages. Now, I-
Go ahead, have you ever heard one minute of general public comment?
I have a list of all the projects that's on this HHH, 112, and only 14 of them are due to finish in 2020. Most of them are scheduled to, uh, to be complete in 2023, when it's been three years, gone on four years since you got that money. Now, I drove by this one on 88th, 88th and Vermont, I drove around it yesterday. They're not, it's really not complete, there's nobody in there, and your mayor, Garcetti, is in the Wave newspaper with a Mexican illegal alien family proudly saying they, they're getting the apartments. Okay? I'm gonna find out how many African-Americans you have in those apartments, because that community over there on 88th and Vermont, that's a community of African-Americans, it used to be, and these illegal alien Mexicans and Latinos are in there now, and I want to know how many African-Americans are in there. And yesterday, uh, you know, Noori, I disagree with you in, in legalizing child prostitution, but I saw your little girl, don't be surprised if she becomes a prostitute one day.
Okay, members, let's go ahead and vote on item 28 and 33. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, those items pass, let's go ahead and vote on item 34 as amended.
And Madam President, the amending motion for item 34 has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Mr. Busciano, would you like to speak on this?
Madam President, yes, 28 forthwith, please, item 28.
Sure, we'll do that. Let's go ahead and vote on item 34 as amended. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote. Mr. Tom Williams, are you here? Wanna come on up? You are gonna speak on item 31 and general public comment.
For public comment and 31.
That is correct. Item 31 first, and then your general public comment.
Okay, item 31. The vultures are landing, oh, sorry, Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, Sierra Club and Citizens Coalition for a Safe Community. The vultures have landed. Eagle Rock Boulevard's going to get improvements because of 710. 710 was El Sereno. We're being picked over, we have a whole bunch of money, nobody is being involved in 90032. We've already gone through phase one, or round one, depending upon your point of view, and we're now into phase two. And Eagle Rock Boulevard gets money from 710, and we have suffered for 40 years in 32? It seems strange, it seems eh, normal, of vultures preying on 710.
Mr. Williams, you have your one minute of general public comment.
Public comment. You ever heard of T1? That's another 710 boondoggle. It's called locally, the Connector Road. We fought it in the year 2000, we fought it in 2006, and now Caltrans is bringing it back as part of the SR 710. It is solely in the city of Los Angeles. We suffer. However, it is called the Mission Valley Connector Road. That is, it connects to Mission Road, which is in Al Hamra. Al Hamra doesn't have to waste any of their land, they don't have to redo any of their asphalt in Mission Road. We do. We have to pay for all of it, and it only really benefits Al Hamra, the Al Hamra, and the villages that are being proposed in the city of Al Hamra. We reject that, and we would like to have the city council-
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
-reject it and the 710 stubs.
Thank you, sir. Members, let's go ahead and vote on item 31 and 38. Let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, those items are approved, let's move on to general public comment. Marco Juarez.
And Madam President, just for clarification, on item 33B, the lien was reduced to $879.70 and then confirmed.
That is correct. Mr. Juarez, you have one minute of general public comment.
Good morning. First of all, congratulations for your nomination, and since you're Hispanic, probably you can help us now. We've been suffering a lot, a lot, harassment, intimidation, retaliation, threats, and especially discrimination to low-income families and Hispanic disabled tenants by the science of Los Angeles Housing Community Investment Department, and especially for Joseph Placencia, Investigador Joseph Placencia, April Aguilar, Evelyn Araujo, Marielena Diaz, and Letitia Bates, they refused to do their job. We are in fixed income. One more increase, illegal increase of rent, we're gonna be homeless. Why the city needs more homeless, I don't understand. Why nobody wants to do nothing here in item 10, Housing Community Report, Relative to Improving Los Angeles Housing Community Investment Department? Why you don't start removing public servants, refusing to do their job and help us? We need your help. Now you're Hispanic, and now you know why disabled Hispanic tenants, we're suffering all discrimination. Thank you.
Mr. Juarez, Sean Arias? Sean, are you here? Arias doesn't seem to be in the room. Jacqueline Richardson? Ms. Richardson, are you here? Sean, was that, you, did you mean, did you mean, did you have the wrong last name?
Okay.
No, you already spoke on general public comment. Okay, thank you, Sean, sorry about that. Ja, Ms. Ms. Richardson, you wanna come on up? Good morning, Ms. Richardson, you have your one minute of general public comment.
Nancy P., the Democrat, the Democrat of the House, would probably like to know the application of the term sanctuary city, how it applies to this city. Whoever, it, it, she, she would like to know about it if possible. If there's anything wrong, I believe she can clean it up faster than the city can, because she's above the city. I'm sure that if there are any abuses, and I think there are, she'll be able to help with it faster than you can, because I don't, if it's a budget, or she has more spies, or resources, whatever, if there are any problems, I'm pretty sure she can help clean them up quickly. I hope you'll be able to ask her to see if she thinks there are any abuses, or you think there are any abuses, and clean it up. It'll make our city so much better, and it'll be so much sweeter.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. That concludes general public comments, so general public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, what is before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Seeing none, can we all please rise for adjourned motions, including members of our Mr. Blumenfeld?
Thank you. Colleagues, today I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Thiti Phong Chan Noru Tigaon. He's also was known by, as Victor, and he died suddenly and unexpectedly at the age of 55. Victor was a member of the city family and a treasured colleague in the Bureau of Street Services. He started working with the city in 2012, and throughout his career, he's been with the Bureau of Street Services Engineering Division. His contributions to the city include designing and managing several design-build projects, including Solano Canyon bus stop improvements, Beverly Boulevard transportation enhancement, Washington Boulevard streetscape, Reseda median refurbishment, and various safe routes to school projects. He touched all of our districts, even if you didn't work with him personally. And more recently, he joined the Accelerated Safety and Accessibility Program section, working on the Metro Purple Line Phase Two and Three projects. And prior to joining the city family, he owned and operated his own private landscape architectural practice in Bangkok, Thailand, for a number of years, and then worked at various landscape architectural firms within Los Angeles, including Lawrence Moss and Associates, and David Evans and Associates Incorporated. Victor was known to his friends by his memorable laughter, artistic nature, and calm demeanor. He was an avid photographer and an amazing choir singer. He spent his weekends volunteering at church and taking care of those in need who were around him. He's already missed by all of us who had the privilege of knowing him. He's survived by his wife, Teresa, and his mother, his father, and younger sister who reside in Thailand. May he rest in peace.
Are there any adjourned motions to my left? Mr. Busciano.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we lost a member of the city family, worked out of Housing Authority. Martin Lima Peary, officially called Marty, was the true definition of the American dream and never took that for granted. He was born on December 18, 1971, here in Los Angeles, to Anita Moore and George Peary, and grew up in the Liso Village community. He would go on to become the director responsible for managing and operating all of Hackla's public housing sites. He was the youngest of his siblings, attended and graduated Ulysses S. Grant High School in 1990. He began his career at Hackla right after high school, at the age of 18, as a residence services site assistant. With his well-known work ethic, talent, and positivity, he advanced quickly with the agency. Within working, while working, rather, Martin started attending Cal State LA and obtained his bachelor's degree in psychology in 2005. In 2011, Marty left Hackla and continued his service and career with the Housing Authority of LA County, and remained there until 2015. He returned to Hackla as a deputy director of housing services and was promoted to director shortly after. And at both agencies, Marty always placed the well-being of the community and residents first. He always reminded everyone of the importance of the mission and doing the right thing. He was caring, compassionate, energetic person who brightened up the room when he walked into it. He found no man or woman to be a stranger. More importantly, he treated everyone like family, his contagious laughter could fill a room. He was a man of strong faith and moral character. Marty's preceded in death by his mother and father. He was a true advocate, a great partner to our office. He also leaves behind his brothers Joseph, Peter, Kenneth, Manuel, Chris, and George, and Sister Joyce. He also survived, he's also survived by seven nephews, eight nieces, a godson, and his loving partner, Billy Garcia. Marty also leaves behind a host of friends and large extended family. He will be impossible to replace in this city, and he would dearly be missed. Marty Lima Peary, may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Any other adjourned motions to my left? Any other adjourned motions to my right? Oh, Mr. Sidhu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, last night I had the privilege and honor of going over to the wake for Alejandro Viegas Lopez. Many of you know Teresa Viegas, or you know David Galavies. David Galavies was my first policy director when I got elected, one of my first, of the four people I hired, and at that moment, him and Teresa were courting each other, and eventually they got married, they have their wonderful children, and they're great civic-minded leaders of our community. Her father passed away last, a few weeks ago, and it was a very moving tribute last night to him. This guy is, is, he would always refer to me as his capitán or mi general, and I was very honored to have him say that. Eighty-eight years old, a real, is what you would call, an organic intellectual, this man who was working class and not formally educated, but easily could have been a musician, easily could have been an engineer, an inventor, a comedian, a very charming man, a very engaging man. You may have recognized him when he was here, when Teresa was, was brought in for her post as the commission that she's on. A very charismatic man, very charming. It was an honor to be there with his family. He was married for 53 years, his grandchildren spoke of him lovingly. Right now, the burial's taking place, I'll be leaving to join them, the family, in a few minutes. An extremely decent human being, passionate, loving, artistic, caring, embracing, very special man, and so, it's a loss to our city. I ask that we join, the city of Baldwin Park will also do the same, their- and because, again, victim blaming takes place today. And so I think they're afraid to share their stories.
Well, can I add too, just that it's the same thing we're talking about here and I think this is a start. I do think the domestic violence movement is sort of like a step behind, but DV, domestic violence and sexual assault go hand in hand. A lot of survivors of domestic violence are also sexual assault survivors, so I don't think it's isolated, but I think it's just what we're talking about. It's the awareness that these, there's no label, there's no like defining factor, like right now, we're talking about coercive control. A lot of people don't know what that is and what that looks like in the context of our relationships. So I think there's a lot of work that we still need to do in terms of educating and preventing so that the generation, Generation Z, is in, you know, having these larger conversations in schools where it's not trivialized and it's not something that's sort of behind closed doors. It's something that we talk about openly and there are services available for that, for both parties. So not just the survivor, but also those that are aggressors that want to make that change and having an open door to have them like also get connected to services.
So let's conclude with this, you know, our office, as was mentioned, has really elevated the significance of grappling with family violence. And one of the really heroic aspects, Deborah, of your presence today is that you're personifying why this matters so much. Let's talk about that personal experience. Being a, you went through this now very well-publicized, but very challenging experience with a lot of trauma. Have you healed from that?
Most definitely, in fact, it's made me stronger and more aware.
What tools did you use to overcome what was really significant trauma? And by the way, I'm wondering if your kids have healed from this?
Well, I had to educate myself what happened, what is coercive control, water red flags, what is love bombing, what is gaslighting, so on and so forth. So again, really learning about all the different things that I had gone through are important. My daughter, Tara, has PTSD from the incident with John, and some days she's great, some days she struggles with it. So there's, you know, we're still growing and learning and healing.
We're grateful that you have shared very courageously your experience with us. Wendy, your expertise is phenomenal, we very much benefit from our partnership with you and we've learned a lot today. Pallavi, your leadership is exceptional and you're bringing a great deal to not only our office, but to the wider community. I want to thank everybody here for coming today. I think we're going to conclude for this afternoon with a lot more to come on this very important issue. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Always.